If you'd all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which we stand.
Under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
We do have some minor changes to the agenda tonight. And we are recording, correct, David and Nick? Thank you. Under, let's see, number nine, the reentry committee. We are not going to be talking about town hall tonight. Rather, we're going to talk about the senior center and plans that we have for opening the senior center for activities. So we'll change town halls to senior center on number nine. On number 11, solar project at transfer station. We not only need to have an eight dash 24 referral to planning and zoning, we not only need a town meeting date, but we will also be setting a public hearing date. And I'll explain that. So number 11, add the words set public hearing date. Number 12, that should not be BOS school lunch fund. That should rather be Board of Education School Lunch Fund. Number 13, fourth quarter transfers, Board of Education, insert building maintenance fund. So with those changes on number nine, 11, 12, and 13, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved. I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph, obfuscated by Lou, excuse me. Any, any discussion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries? And? And we're all present tonight. All right, the next item is approval of minutes from the regular Board of Selectmen meeting dated April 21, 2021. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Now I'll second that.
Seconded by Lou. Any changes, errors, or omissions from the selectmen? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The motion carries, thank you. Under number five, we are going to have our Director of Finance, Tom Robinson, speak to us under communications of our budget report, which was emailed earlier today. And Tom is going to discuss some highlights. Tom? We'll just do a mic check, Nick and Dave. Speak, Tom.
Sounds good. You all set, Dave?
Yeah.
All right.
Selectmen, can you hear on Zoom?
They say something, Tom. I'll let you know, I can hear Susan.
Yeah, we're going to start with the budget revenue report.
We can hear you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right, so we sent out the budget revenue report and the authorized spending report. So for the general fund, taxes are, you know, we feel are coming in pretty strong. There's a little bit of a lag in the interest in prior year numbers. Some of that has to do with the methodologies with our interest plan earlier in the year. Educational cost sharing monies have come in. There was, this is account number 101. There was a reduction, as usually there are. This was a reduction by the state for excess costs. So there was a reduction that's based on the formulas that comes out to 61923, which is the remainder of what's in the total variance column. 207 is our emergency management number. So far, we have received some of our EPMG grants from past years that have come in, as well as the COVID relief monies have come in. It was in the 60,000 range. And then is also, there is, for the storm Isaías, Director of Public Works, Bob Shea, Fire Chief, and Susan Bransfield, myself, who've been working with FEMA, putting together the reimbursements for that with help of our staff. And, well, you know, hoping that to get some decent sized funding back from that storm. Is debris removal is one of the pieces of that. So with debris removal, you're allowed to take actual regular time, which is often not allowed, but in debris removal cases, regular time is allowed. So then you continue down the sheet and we get to the tax, the town clerks, this area where you're around 00312, conveyance tax. And? 0314, which is recording fees. And you'll see that those numbers have exceeded the budget to date. And that's a positive swing based on sales refinancing and residential and commercial sales and refinancing. So there's some positive swings in, in that. So as the market is hotter, so goes that revenue. As when the market's cool, the revenues in those areas, cool. Going down the page, you come to gun permits 321. Generally a reasonably small budget item, but in this year, we have received $8,680, so 50,000, 60,000 above that. And that's, those are often come out of the first selectwoman's office with Michelle Sepaglia taking care of that, that information. And she issued 124 permits from July 1st to now. So that's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of effort, a lot of work between that department and the police departments. As we go to the next page. 324 is police private duty. As you can see, and we've talked about all year, private duty is, was higher than expected due to various jobs, the bridge project, as well as a continual workout of Middletown that our crews go over and work in Middletown. So there is a revenue, $82,000 has come in over the budgets. The, as of the outstanding receivable at that, as of April was about 46,000. The unbilled as of April was about 45,000. And then we have two more months to anticipate in that $45,000 range for those two months. So on the flip side of that, we'll go, we'll hit the expense side. And that's something over the next, this month and early in June, we'll, you know, determine if there needs to be a supplemental appropriation of revenue and expense like we've done in the past when police private duty far exceeds the expected revenue and the expected expenses. So that's something we'll continue to watch as we've stated all, all year. When you go down, further down the page, interest income. You know, that number is off. We've said that number was going to be off all, all year. That's a tough number. As, as interest rates are just, are very low. And from an operating standpoint, some of the, when interest rates are low, the balance that we require in our operating account required to be higher too also. So as you require higher operating numbers within your operating account to, to balance that out, you also have less monies to invest. But it's somewhat nominal as the investment rate is such, is so low on those liquid monies. The permit, I did, I did skip over permitting. Permitting is more or less within line of where we had, that's 0328, of where we were expecting it to be. It should be, you know, without, assuming the monies that we budgeted for brand new place not being included, it's, it's hitting the objective or slightly above where it was anticipating. So if there is movement at the brand new location, that would also improve that. Any questions on revenues?
I would just note, Tom, that revenues are in very good shape with remaining amounts still to be collected, 448,000, a total of about 1.28%. So we're just a little over 1% still needing to be collected. And I want to compliment your office, which includes collective revenue and all of the other offices that collect revenue. It's been a good year so far.
Tom, do, can you tell us what we, what did we end up collecting from the water park? Or the?
End up? To date?
Yeah. I mean, I know the new season didn't start, but how did we end up last season?
Well, we do make some revenue, I'll just note, in May and June. However, Rick, I think what you're asking is how much did we make from July 1, 2020 through today?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there's two ways to look at this. So if you look at the property rental, there's two components of that. There's the Oak Hill, and currently, there used to be multiple components, but right now is, school activity is, is few and far between with activities. Oak Hill, I believe, has paid all of their amount for their, the fiscal year. So they're above 80,000 mark of their monies. And they're in that property rental line item. So the property rental line item is budgeted at 361. Today, we have 321, 823 in there. Of that, upwards of 80,000 is related to Oak Hill. So there, there is continual monies to come in. So we do need to collect on, on those continual monies. And generally, May and June would be decent months. The, the October to April is generally very, very slow. And then you'll start seeing the pickup a little bit in May and a little bit in June. What we do know, and this is kind of, you know, as we discussed in previous meetings, why there was revenue loss. There was revenue losses when you look at, compared to the various, the previous years, there was revenue losses in the over of, you know, we, we were using close to, combined 184,000 is kind of how we came up with our number for the police accountability monies that we put in the budget. And that was kind of premised off of some revenue loss from Brownstone over the period, as well as interest loss over the period. So there was some, if you looked at previous years, the previous years, there was revenue loss. And then we'll, we will continue to, to research that, as well as we lowered our estimate in this budget year over what our normal budget years were. That's why we're kind of getting close to hitting the mark, because it's not necessarily the dollar value that we had, had had in the past at that level.
Is the water park current with us, or are they behind in their payments?
They are not behind. They do owe us some reports for the winter months. And typically, we ask them if there is any activity, Rick. Typically, there is not, but we do ask them to send in their activity reports. And I think Michelle asked for them for the winter months. I haven't received those yet. But as far as the revenue that is due to us that we know of, it has been received.
Okay, great.
As of being.
As of what we know.
If we, you know, if the reports come in and they show revenue, we will collect the revenue. But if, generally, even if those would come in, they're generally of smaller nature during the winter season. Very, generally very, very low, if anything.
I think in general, Rick and Tom, we, we look pretty good as far as what we had projected last year for this line item. But of course, we are not going to be making what we made, let's say, in fiscal year 19 or fiscal year 18. And that is what we compare when we look at revenue loss. So we look at what was collected, for example, in fiscal year 2019 compared to fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. And, but, but as far as what we projected, we're doing well. We only have 10% more in that line item left. And we anticipate more revenue coming in in May and June. Sean Hayes was at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning and gave a good report, anticipating a minimum of 50% capacity based on the governor's recommendations as of this date. And they are getting ready. They are getting the park ready and they will be reopened. One thing that they did ask is if there are any people interested in employment. They have many job openings for the summer. And they're encouraging people to come to a job fair, which can be found on their website for Brownstone Park. I think it's brownstonepark.com. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. I want to move on to the authorized spending report. So the authorized spending report on page one is the probate court. And that one is, is something we had talked about before. It is over budget, slight amount of 544, 50, 544,000, 50 cents. The probate court needed current year allocations of a higher amount due to space needed from the COVID. They needed more space and therefore there was a rental. And I believe that was on a go forward basis as well as we budgeted in future that they were going to need additional space. Page two is, elections are not over budget at this point. As we go through this budget cycle, there's a strong possibility it will be over budget. And that's expected. And there were various grants that were given, provided by the state, as well as some private grants that helped with these, with these costs. So you would expect an overage in the expense as we have received additional grant revenues that have fallen into the general fund. And some of those had gone into other state grants, as well as in the non-missional town clerk fees, if there was a, there was a grant that was related to that as well. And then miscellaneous town clerk fees, going back to the revenue, includes online, the recordings from online copies. And that's a nice revenue amount as well. As we go through this, the, we flip through to page five is the next page I'd like to address. And that is the police budget. And police budget, you know, doing quite well in, as we said. So this was, we talked about revenue, now you look to the expense, which is 0102314014, police private duty budget, 152,000. Expense to date, 244. So there's a largely over budget, but on the flip side, revenue is, is coming in very, very strong. So you gotta, if you look there at April's monthly, you're hitting around 32,000. So you would expect probably another 60, 62 to 64,000 there of additional expense, as you would think that during these, May, May and June, that activity will ramp up as weather improves. Generally, there's more construction during those time periods. So that's, as we've stated before, that's the piece that we're reviewing and looking. The other component in this is 31,000, 31,000, which is service contracts. So service contracts, we usually don't ever talk about too much in police. It's usually a very reasonable number. It's, it's, it stays pretty good. We had a big, we had some HVAC issues, heat pump failures in where the cell, where the prisoners would go. So that was required to get fixed and improved. So we did that. And then also we've had some failures to our generators after the last storm. The East Asia storm caused some concerns in the running there. And we've had some reviews and, and those have come back. So what's positive, the positive to that is that runtime is allowed to be claimed in the FEMA. Not actually the repairs, but runtime. So there will be some monies coming back due to runtime of the generators during the storm. So that's, that is a positive on that over budget area.
I, I do want to point out that I will be bringing back to you some recommendations in regard to the police private duty. Because it's such a large number, there is a large amount of revenue that we've received, as well as a large amount of expenditures, we will be making some adjustments to the budget going forward. So we'll probably talk about that in June. Thank you, Tom.
The next account that I'd like to go over is on page nine, which was the planning, the planning department, between the planning department and the zoning department, as we talked about throughout the year, there was some positions that were in the planning department that had not been filled. And then there is more hours in the zoning department to cover the other position. So, and higher amount in the zoning department and zoning matters and is, and doing those people, those, those types of work. But globally, those two should work together. But I just wanted to do, if you see the zoning, it seems like, oh, well, that's a large overage. But as we had spoken about all year, that was an anticipated overage that will be adjusted through 040 budget during the fourth quarter transfers. Page 13. This is the transfers. So based on the ordinances that requires the open, the land ex, open space land acquisition fund, I posted the entry of a transfer to that fund, so to be in compliance with the ordinance. And we will have to make an adjustment for that in our fourth quarter transfer reviews on the town side. But, you know, to be in compliance, we've posted that, that transfer.
Tom, what page was that on?
That's page 13, account number 0109300090008. Interfund transfer out.
Oh yeah, I see it. Okay, I, I found it, thank you.
Any questions for Tom? The report, Tom? We'll look forward to seeing more information.
All right.
I also wanted to make a couple of announcements for our calendars. June 2nd, at 7:00, I'm going to be requesting that we have a special meeting prior to our regularly scheduled 7:30 meeting. And on June 2nd at 7:00, we will be having a joint meeting with the Board of Education. Their committee that is looking at space needs for Portland schools needs to have a charge from the Board of Selectmen outlining the various procedures and responsibilities of that study committee. Charles and I feel this is an important step to take as this group is beginning to really take a very close and careful look at our facilities, their needs, not only for today, but their needs going forward. And Mike Hernandez and Lou Pear are liaisons to that committee. So we will be putting this forward and I will work with them and share it with them before we bring it to you. I don't know if Mike or Lou wanted to make any comments on that at this point.
Sure. We've had several meetings already and they've been Zoom meetings. And we've talked about the facilities and the cost for repairs of many of the buildings and school buildings. We've also had a presentation by a superintendent from South Windsor, who has done some renovation and built new schools in her district, and explained how she went about it and how she collected data to give us, or give them, information on whether, how to, how to move forward and how to look at certain long range and short range plans. So with that said, we've just been listening to different people so far. And with a charge that we'll be receiving on June 2nd, we'll be able to move forward on what needs to be done. And we have a committee of great people, a wide, wide area of expertise in education, in architecture, in engineering, in the school-based information. So we're looking forward to having a real good dialogue and hopefully we'll be able to come up with some good recommendations for the future.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to add anything?
No, I just want to add with, on to what Lou just said, that we, we really do have a diverse group of people. And we're collaborating and things are going really well. And when we bring it up on June 2nd, we'll be asking to move forward with this committee. So that's about it. Lou did a good job.
Yeah, very good. Thank you both for serving. The other date I'd asked for you to put on your calendar is June 26th. And that will also be at 7:00. We will not meet June, is it 17, Jim?
16.
16. June 16 is high school, Portland High School graduation, to which we attend. So that will not be held as a second meeting in June. Rather, June 26th at 7:00, we are having a. Oh, excuse me, June, thank you, June 23. I made a mistake. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
June 23, which is a Wednesday, right, Jim?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And it's going to be a special meeting on diversity, racial equity. I've been working with Janet Nocheck. And Janet Nocheck and I interviewed various consulting firms that do this professionally. And we have engaged a firm for which the library is paying half and general budget out of my office, program services will be paying the other half. It promises to be a very professional and I think important meeting for us to engage in. It's something that the diversity task force had recommended we do as a board, that we have a, at least one annual training. So this will be the annual training. And everyone is invited. It is specifically for the Board of Selectmen at a meeting. But of course, by the magic of Zoom, everyone can participate. It will also be taped. So look forward to that June 23rd date.
Susan, is that going to be a hybrid meeting as well?
I would say yes. Yes. So you are welcome to, as selectmen, to attend here. I believe that the presenter, at this point, Rick, will be remote.
Okay.
That is my understanding. However, we can be in person here. And I think we will likely be at the Buck Foreman. That's where we're going to have our hybrid meetings after tonight, because Mary Ponce is going to talk to us in a few minutes about reopening the senior center. So we will not be meeting here, but rather at Buck Foreman. But I'll fill you in as those dates get a little bit closer.
Okay.
We also got in communication a letter from Tom Malecki. Tom Malecki is the Plan of Conservation and Development Implementation Committee Chairman. And he is asking us, and on your behalf, I will be reviewing the 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development once again, to see what actions we have taken and give those through Mary Dickerson to this committee. They are looking to update their Plan of Conservation and Development website and provide visual evidence of the progress we've made in implementing our Plan of Conservation and Development. So stay tuned for more information on that. I'll open it up to public comment. Nick, can you let us know if we have anything in the chat?
There's nothing in the chat right now.
Thank you, Nick. Number seven, we had a, I think, a very good week in terms of our proclamations. Ms. Marge Quannigan celebrated 100 years. Ms. Marge Flanagan celebrated one hundred years. Actually, her birthday was April twenty nine. There was a proclamation given to her on your behalf by me. And I just want to point out that Marge and her husband, John Flanagan, were married in nineteen forty eight, moved to Portland in nineteen fifty five. They are parents to three children, Tricia, John, and Karen. They have four grandchildren, Kalen, John, Brianna, and Kelly. And great grandparents to Dean Bennett and twins Branson and Nora. They're young, when their youngest started school, Marge worked at her brother's restaurant on Route sixty six. And then she worked at Pratt and Whitney in Middletown. She's a passionate gardener. Marge can identify species of many flowers. And for twenty five years, she has been a devoted Yukon woman's basketball fan. Marge served as a Cub Scout leader and has maintained genuine lifelong friendships with her high school classmates. Join me in wishing Mrs. Flanagan a wonderful year ahead as she celebrates her hundredth birthday. And we acknowledge this on April thirty. And she's really a wonderful, wonderful person. So congratulations. International Firefighters Day is May fourth, twenty twenty one. And we gave to our fire department a proclamation. I will just briefly indicate that on the fourth of May, all citizens are invited. You're invited to remember the past firefighters who have died while serving. Serving our community, they have dedicated their lives to protecting our safety. At the same time, let us show our support and appreciation to our firefighters, not only in Portland, but throughout our country and worldwide. Firefighters continue to protect us so well during the year. I proclaimed May fourth, twenty twenty one, as International Firefighters Day, gave the proclamation to Chief Bob Shea. And asked that he convey the Board of Selectmen and all the citizens of Portland's great tributes. And great thanks for the sacrifices that they make for our health and safety. And likewise, May nine through fifteen is National Police Week. Which in nineteen sixty two, our President John F. Kennedy proclaimed as what he called our Peace Officers Memorial Day. National Police Week pays special recognition to our law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Protecting us and making sure we are safe. There are more than nine hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across our country. And that includes the twelve sworn officers in the Portland Police Department. The members of our department play an essential role in safeguarding us. And let us join together and proclaim the week, May nine through fifteen, as Police Week. And give honor to the sacrifices and the safety that they give to us. And I conveyed that to Captain Ron Malardo, and it will hang in the Police Department as well. The next item, number eight, is racial equity diversion and inclusion. And April Graves, are you available for, for a statement tonight?
There she is.
Hi, good evening. The task force has been very busy this month. We have our resource pamphlet ready to go to print. So that should be getting printed within the next week. That will get out to the community and the library, the town hall, different stores around town. And then it should also be posted on the town website and we'll be looking to having it posted on the school website as well. We have our concerns and suggestions. We are still waiting for some more responses from our partners to come back. So hopefully by our meeting next week, we'll have some more responses coming back. Just to remind all of you that that was emailed to you. I'll send another reminder email tomorrow. This past Sunday, we had our youth forum. It was a small group of children, students, I should say. But it was a really great conversation and we're looking forward to having another one. We'll be planning that date next Tuesday at our monthly meeting. And then we've been busy with our Juneteenth planning. We have all our speakers in place. We're maybe looking to add somebody for singing. We're not quite sure yet with the COVID restrictions, how that's going to be with a live singer. And then we're just looking to secure a food truck or two. And then we will be set with Juneteenth.
Great report. And I will get some answers to you. I mean, one answer came tonight in our training. But I know there are some others that I will convey to you as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, April. And thank you to all the members. Item nine, reentry committee, Senior Center. And is Mary Pott available?
Yeah, I just said it, a co-host.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Mary.
Before I go into the senior center business, I want to just comment on what April had said about the youth forum on Sunday. I have to say that it might have been a small group, but it was probably some of the most articulate young people that I have heard in a very long time. That were serious about the comments they were making and very, very impressive. So we should all be proud that we have some youth in our town that are willing to step up to the plate and, and give some honest feelings about what's going on in their lives. So I'll move from young people to old people. Smooth transition. So yes, Susan's sitting in the, we'll call it the TV studio. That we're hoping that that's going to be soon packed up and moved out and on. This has been, I think, as all of you know, this has been a very difficult year for a lot of people in our town, especially our seniors. They have been basically locked in their houses, stayed in their houses. We officially started, February fifth was our first really big vaccination clinic. That we had worked with Chatham Health District to make that happen and inoculated between five hundred and six hundred people that I scheduled for vaccines in the town of Portland. A good share of those were our, our senior citizens. So that being said, we also know that they're starting to get restless. They feel they've had their vaccines. They're getting restless. They want to get out. They want to get back together. So we have been meeting Susan and I and Carol Ravicki at the Senior Center under the guidance of Chatham Health, Russ Melman, who we have been following his recommendations right from the start. They said this has been a very long year for all of us. But with that, we are going to hopefully move forward with, we're going to call it a soft opening. The doors will be unlocked. The doors will be open. And we're going to have some of the scheduled groups that have been coming to the Senior Center for a long time. The difference is that they're going to be asked to call ahead and register. So we know how many people are going to be coming into the building. It's not going to be drop in as you want to drop in. We need to know that you're coming so that we can, you know, keep a, a running list of who is coming in and out of the building. Scheduling the groups so that they're going to not overlap to make sure that we have time in between to do proper cleaning in the building. So if it's a, one day in particular, there's two groups that sort of, one blends into the next. And that will be probably a morning group and, and also turn into an afternoon group. So there'll be a, a break in between. So we are looking to possibly get that started. I'm, tomorrow would be wonderful for our seniors. I know that they would be excited, but I, I think we're going to say maybe next Tuesday. Because Tuesdays are our usual bears on a journey group. That they have been doing the best they can out of their homes. But they have delivered thousands and thousands and thousands of bears to the Harriet Clinic up in Hartford. The cancer clinic in Hartford. Helen and Harry Gary Clinic in Hartford. And they're missing their getting together. And I'm sure that that is also being missed at in Hartford as well. So I would like to ask for recommendations or the go-ahead about that from all of you to proceed with us doing a soft opening at our senior center, starting now.
Thank you, Mary. Good report. I'll open it up for questions from the selectmen.
Mary, are you only allowing vaccinated people in or everyone is?
We cannot, we cannot ask people if they are vaccinated.
Okay.
And I think that unfortunately, what's going to happen is that the groups are going to have to be almost self-policing themselves. We do know that there are seniors that have not received vaccinations that do participate in our programs. But we are not in a position, or can we be in a position, to ask people specifically if they have been vaccinated?
Is it because of the HIPAA?
I'm sorry, Mike?
Mary, is it because of the HIPAA laws?
No, it's just, it's just one of the laws that you cannot ask people that question. There are very detailed specifics to where you can require people to be vaccinated. But for something like this, we cannot, we cannot say, if you have not been vaccinated, you can't come. You know, there's specifics that say that hopefully they will sort of isolate themselves a little further from the group. I cannot say for sure that that will happen. You know, we can't, I know that when they get together, they're going to be talking. So it's not going to take too much conversation, I think, before they're going to understand who, who has had, you know, the vaccine. And I said, we have worked very hard with the seniors and we have a high percentage of our seniors in the town of Portland have been vaccinated.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons I think that Chatham Health is recommending that the centers can open is due to the high level of vaccinations that have occurred for folks over the age of fifty-five, sixty. And we do have good numbers. Everyone is still, as we are tonight in the senior center, we're wearing our face masks. Even though I, I happen to know all the people in the room have been vaccinated, we still indoors are wearing face coverings. And there'll be other guidance that our senior staff, senior center staff will be implementing to ensure the best safety for people. There'll be, as Mary pointed out, the programming will be pre-registration for individuals. And that way we can limit the numbers so that there is not an overcrowding within the good-sized rooms that we do have here.
Lou? Susan.
I called on Lou. You're, you're next, Rick. Sorry about that.
Sorry, Rick.
Got in under the wire there.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Lou.
Just a, a point of information. I know that when we're talking about the, you know, I think it's the yard goats. They have a, a statement that says either required or recommended, that you have to have a vaccine. Either recommended or required. And I'm not sure which one it is. It could be both. Couldn't we do that and put that on the website and also on the door that says that it's recommended? I think that's a, an honor system. We're not asking anybody what their, their privacy is or what they, whether they've had it or not. But I think in respect of all the people that come to the senior center, it should be either recommended or it should be mandatory. And I, I think that that's just a statement, but it's not interfering with anybody's privacy.
And I will add to that, Lou, and then we'll get to Rick. We are going to be restating what the Chatham Health District has said, and that is Chatham Health continues to recommend against high-risk activities such as communal dining inside, indoor fitness classes at senior centers, which will not be happening. Seniors who are not immune through vaccination or from having recently recovered in the last ninety days from natural infection should avoid in-person group activities, especially those taking place indoors. However, given high rates of vaccine coverage among residents aged sixty-five plus, it is reasonable to resume some small group, as Mary pointed out, and other in-person activities at senior centers. And then Mary and Carol will be coming up with the considerations that are listed here. And certainly, it, it, it is important, if at all possible, that people get vaccinated. And I think that's just really, and I would agree. There's nothing wrong with recommending that. It's certainly something that our Centers for Disease Control are recommending, our Chatham Health are recommending, and I think it would be prudent to recommend. What do you think, Mary?
I, I'm, I think that one of the things in, Lou, I know you were mentioning the yard goats. And I believe that is a private entity. Are they part of the city of Hartford or are they a private entity?
I think, yeah, I, I, I'm not certain. I'm
Well, I think the ballpark's owned by the city. The, the team is a private entity.
Okay. So I think there's a difference between a private entity versus a town municipality or a city, that what you can require people to do or not to do. And I, I fully believe that it would be wonderful if we could make sure that everybody that walks through our doors had, had been, you know, vaccinated. But I'm not sure if legally we can do that. You know, I think the best that we're going to be able to do is take as many precautions as we can. One of the things that has been recommended is that we are not going to have the, the wonderful snack times. And I'm talking about some really great snack things that these people make and bring in. So they're not going to be able to have their coffee hours. They're not going to be able to have their snacks together. That's going to be hard for them to understand that to start out with. Or hopefully down the road, that's going to change. But right now, the fact that they're just going to be able to get together and do their activity. They can bring a bottle of water for themselves, but they, we're not going to be able to have coffee made. We're not going to have, you know, any of the, the food that they're used to serving during a little break time. So looking at the setup of the room, all of the precautions that we are going to do the best we can. You know, and be the unfortunate, I'll say it, the mask police to go around and say, hey, don't forget, you got to wear your mask. Because I think people are starting to get very easy about the fact that I've had a, and it gets, the longer you've had your vaccine, the more comfortable you get. Some people are getting that way, but I think we're going to find that our seniors are going to be overly cautious when they first come out. We have several that are, you know, they're gung ho. They've been wanting for a couple of months to come in. But I think we're knowing that we definitely need to keep everyone as safe as we can, especially that age group. We're going to do the best we can with that. So I, we could, I guess, get an opinion possibly from Chatham Health about that requirement of coming into the building without a vaccine. But I, or whoever else we have to get a, a legal opinion on, but
Well, I think we could get a statement from Chatham Health in regard to vaccinations, as you was talking about. And I think that would be helpful. I, I don't, I don't want to get too much further because Rich Shaw had his hand up, so.
Um, well, some of the, some of my question you answered about the mask. So the masks are going to be mandatory. That's good. I kind of agree with Lou. If we can't mandate it, we should definitely strongly recommend it. But I don't see why we can't check with somebody in the state or, or the health district about whether or not we can require them to have a vaccination. And if we can't, we can't. But then I would definitely strongly recommend it to them. And then my other question, Mary, was, and you've sort of, I think you mentioned it, but I didn't quite follow. Is there going to be any sort of extra cleaning or change in the cleaning schedule or how you operate the senior center? You know, a little differently now than before we had this whole pandemic?
Yes, definitely. For instance, I have, and I did last year as well, I've been doing the rent rebate program. So I'm scheduling the people farther apart than I normally would. And as soon as they get up and walk around the corner, everything is completely sanitized. So our idea of having one group in the morning, a break like twelve to one, which can be a lunchtime for staff, is going to be also the cleaning time between the chairs, the tables, before the next group comes in. So we're going to be paying definitely special attention to that, to make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further comments? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation? Is there a motion to approve the recommendations from Mary with the additional questions that will be asked of Chatham Health in regard to vaccinations?
So move.
Thank you, Lou. Seconded by Ralph. Any further discussion? I want to thank you, Mary and Carol Ravicky for doing the research on this and providing the implementation. You're doing a very good job and I appreciate the safety, which is number one for our residents. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Is everybody on okay? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. The next item is sidewalk projects. I wanted to let you know the sidewalk project for, let's see, it would be Freestone Avenue into High Street and then over to Marlboro Street into the area near, let's see, Riverside Street. That is, I've received a proposal from Nathan L. Jacobson and Associates for the engineering on that project. I'm in the process of reviewing that and anticipate that we will be signing that estimate to do that design work that is necessary before we go out to bid on that project. The other project that Bob Shea, Tom Robinson and others have been working on is the completion of the sidewalk money that was part of the twenty sixteen referendum. And there are dollars remaining and the work that went out to bid came in with a favorable bid. And the contract amount will be approximately a hundred and six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. And it will be to provide sidewalks from the area of, on Fairview Street, from Foley Road to High Street on the south side of the street, as well as some additional sidewalk improvement as you turn the corner from Fairview going north on East Main Street on the east side. Where there's some very, very needy sidewalks. This isn't, this is in addition to the work that was done recently with the shaving of the sidewalks that had a, had a minimum lip, let's call it, or depression on those sidewalks. That work, I believe, has been completed. And we do have a resolution in front of us. Resolve, the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes for selectwoman Susan Bransfield to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Portland a contract with DNP Marais construction of one seventeen Woodland Circle Budlow Mass for the purpose of bid number twenty twenty-one oh six sidewalk project Fairview Street from Foley Road to High Street. And I'm, I'm telling you, there's also money to include East Main. And the total contract amount prior to any required change orders is approximately one hundred six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. This amount includes base bid plus ad alternate number one, which I believe would be the area.
That, that's that northeast corner of, of East Main and up area.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution, Jim?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll say, Rick.
Rick, did you second that?
Yes.
Thank you, discussion.
I just want to say that I think I was very happy to give a bid that came in. Was favorable, it allows us really to finish that Fairview, which is something that's in bad deed because of some of the water issues and other things. It's going to allow us to get resolve the curb reveal issue. It's also going to allow us to fix those sidewalks. In a way, by the way, that I know a couple of residents I've talked to were happy to know that the snow shelf is going to stay in place, right? Basically, the sidewalk is going to be replaced at the same location. It's not going to be moved out and become an integrated curb. It's going to, that little brass strip is going to remain. And it also, at the same time, lets us do that adult, which is at that northeast corner of Fairview and East Main, that's the last corner in that intersection. It's not handicap accessible and it's going to let us do some of those panels heading north. So fantastic work. And I think that when we look at how much work we've gotten done with those bonded monies versus what we initially thought we could get done, it's a credit to, you know, to Bob, to the team, to Tom, to, you know, the talent, Susan, that we've been able to get as much out of that money as we've been able to get. So very happy to see that work proceeding.
Any other comments? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone. The next item is the solar project at the transfer station. Ultimately, we do need a referral for the eight twenty-four. We need a setting of a public hearing date and also a town meeting date. And I will indicate to you now that I hope you will agree that the end of May, which I believe is May no, later, the next week, Jim?
Oh, you want to, you don't want to go to the next board meeting?
Well, the reason we are not going to do it at, at the next Board of Selectmen meeting is our town council is recommending that we not take the public hearing or the town meeting until the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at it under eight dash twenty-four. So I believe that will be the twenty-sixth of May. And we don't need to have a Board of Selectmen meeting because the decision will ultimately be made by the town meeting. But before we get into that, I thought I'd ask Lou here to give us an update just a bit on, on the project itself.
Thank you, Susan. Yeah, this is a great opportunity for the town. It aligns with state and federal regulations to reduce the carbon footprint. Andy Bauer, who's chairman of the Clean Energy Task Force for the town of Portland, has been working very hard with Susan and, and the state to put together this type of opportunity where a clean energy program will include a solar array at the transfer station. Right now, the transfer station is operated for what it's there for. And they do a great job. But there's a piece of land there that's sitting there and not really being used at all. So this piece of land can now house a solar array that will generate thousands of dollars toward the Board of, toward the Board of Selectmen or the town's budget so that we will have an additional revenue. I don't know the exact numbers that were negotiated, but it, it could possibly be over a million dollars in revenue to the town of Portland on a piece of land that's not being used. But it would generate that type of income for the town over a twenty-year period. In doing so, not only are we generating income, but also we'll be, also be able to say Portland is reducing and they're doing their part to reduce the carbon footprint within the town of Portland. So I want to comment and compliment Bob Shea and Susan and all the other people that have worked on this Clean Energy Task Force in town and also at the state level that have come forward, worked forward on this project. And we're seeming closer and closer to having it actually happen. So this is a great opportunity for clean energy in Portland.
Thank you, Lou. I, I, I want to add, just to reiterate, Robert Cle is the attorney from Cle Sustainability Advisors. Mr. Cle is the former commissioner of the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And he now is in private business. And he has been advising us along with Ellen Sabins of CFW Energy. Ellen does the technical piece, Rob does the legal piece. And we also have been in consultation with Kiri Olson to make certain that our procedures for approval are correct and in line, not only with state law, but with our town charter. And the developer that won the bid is DSD Renewables from Schenectady, New York. The developer has extensive experience developing commercial scale solar installations throughout the Northeast, including those arrays that are found on landfills. And Robert Cle points out that the total lease, as Lou pointed out, and payment in lieu of tax payments over the twenty-year term of the lease will be more than one million dollars. The selectmen tonight will be saying that we are sending this to the eight twenty-four, the town public hearing and the town meeting. And I also will point out that once that occurs and the town meeting votes in the affirmative, then on or about June eleventh, there will be an auction that is held by Eversource to determine what projects will be funded under this particular solar program. And it's called S C E F, which is Shared Clean Energy Facilities. So it's a clean energy facility that will be placed on our landfill. And it will be available in terms of its energy to those institutions and entities that cannot have solar. So it's an idea that piece of land that can't be done, can't have anything else done to it right now. And to be able to produce steady income for the town over twenty years seems to be a win-win for us. So once I get the authority, after we have the public hearing and the town meeting, I will be asked to enter into a binding option agreement with DSD Renewables, which I'll have permission to do. Second, I will have the authority to sign an affidavit stating that DSD Renewables have the right to develop the solar array, provided they are successful in the bid. And that we will enter into the twenty-year long-term lease agreement, which is also what we will be asking the town meeting to give us approval to. I want to point out, as, as Lou has, that the Clean Energy Task Force in Portland has been very much a leader in this area and has allowed us to get to this point. This is not easy work. And to be able to follow this through and see this to its fruition, I think will be quite a feather in our cap for clean energy, for the environment, and also for our bottom line. When we started this budget year last July, this Board of Selectmen said that we would be working diligently to reduce overhead expenditures. And I'm pleased to announce that to be able to reduce the amount of energy that we use through the, this building, we had the lights redone. We had all of the lights redone at Town Hall for energy improvements. We're, we're having work that will be occurring at Brownstone Intermediate School as well as Valley View and Gildersleeve School to reduce their energy as well as reduce the use of natural gas in those buildings. We're also in the process of having a solar array that will be on the backside of Brownstone Intermediate School. We will buy that power that's generated on that facility at a reduced rate, thereby reducing our overhead expenditures. And with this, we are not only utilizing a piece of land that we just have to take care of in terms of mowing. We won't have to mow it anymore, this company will take care of that property. But we'll be adding a million dollars to our revenues over the course of twenty years. So I think we're doing a very good job. I'm just mentioning a few of the projects, working with our public work staff and also working with our buildings and grounds in the schools. We are committed to having more clean energy in this town, to having reduction of overall use of energy and to reduce the expenditures going forward and make it sustainable within our community. And I want to thank and recognize all the people that have been involved with that. So what I need tonight from the Board of Selectmen is a motion, number one, to submit this project to the Portland Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight dash twenty-four referral. And it will be for their May twenty twenty-one meeting. Is there such a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Lou here. Any discussion on the eight dash twenty-four? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The second item that I will ask a motion for is to send this matter, and it will be written up by our attorney, Rob Cle, so that it's clear to our voters and our reviewers that we have a public hearing at six thirty P M on May twenty-sixth. And it will be at the Buck Foreman Building. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor of having the public hearing at that time indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. And the third motion that I, that I'm requesting that we have a special town meeting also on May twenty-sixth at seven P M in the Buck Foreman Community Room on Main Street in order to give approval for us to proceed with the S C E F solar project. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Seconded by Lou. Discussion? Questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
It's kind of interesting that, you know, I think it was, I think it was this week or last week, I don't remember now. And I read an article because there's so much of expansion of these solar panels that they're actually taking down a lot of trees and full, you know, forestry to put these panels up. So, you know, at some point, we're going to hit, you know, where people are going to start looking at how much we lose from that side. But obviously, in this situation, it's a no-brainer because we're putting it on a landfill which has no other use at this time. So, you know, we did our due diligence and looking at the groups, the companies that we can utilize. It seemed like town did that. And that's probably the only tough part to it, to making sure you get the right company. So I, you know, I'm happy to hear that we're heading in this direction.
Thank you, Ralph. Rick, were you going to say something?
Well, I had a question. Is May twenty-sixth also a regular Board of Selectmen meeting or is it just, just for this stuff?
It is only for the public hearing and the special town meeting, Rick.
Okay, and then, yeah, I'll just second what Ralph said. I, I think it's a good idea and it's, you know, I, I notice in Massachusetts and Vermont and even New Hampshire, a lot of the open fields have solar arrays and you just don't see as many of them in Connecticut. And so I think we should take advantage of our, the, the land that is open. I'm not for cutting down a lot of forests by any means, but I think on land like this, it's just, it's really a no-brainer. It's, it's a great thing to do because we can't use that land for anything else really anyway. It has to lay fallow. So, well done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just a great project, very well done.
Thank you. We're not going to count our chickens quite yet. We have to win the, we have to win the, win the, the auction.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I do want to caution us that while it looks very positive, there's always possibility that other communities and other institutions may have even more positive approaches, but I don't know. I think we're, I think we're doing pretty well. We're confident, but not overly so. All right, are you ready for the vote?
We are.
All right, thank you. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you. The next item are two items from the Board of Education. And I know that our superintendent is on the call, as is Steph Trogola and of course, Tom Robinson. So we'll start with the fourth quarter transfers Board of Education school lunch fund. And I don't know if our superintendent wanted to make any comments.
Hello, everyone. Nice to see you all tonight.
Aye.
Stephanie, are you on there? Do you want to bring everybody up to speed on the, the hard work that Anita's been doing to kind of dig us out of a little bit of a hole this year?
Hi, everyone. So as everybody knows, with COVID going on and with schools being out during part of the year, our lunch fund took a huge hit because they could not have, the biggest part was sales within the school. So we have had the free and reduced, every student that gets the meals, we can claim the free and reduced. So it is a little bit more than as if it were, than I think, or I'm sorry, it's all free. So it's a little bit more than if it was ju- So it's a little bit more than if it was just reduced or student paying. But we do lose a lot of it with the sales as well as, um, uh, when people, catering, I'm sorry, catering.
The à la carte items.
Yes. So, we met with John and Anita, and we tried to come up with some creative ways. And after talking to Susan as well, um, over April break, we offered a full week's worth of meals that I believe two hundred and sixteen, uh, two hundred and sixteen children took advantage of. So we got to claim two hundred and sixteen breakfasts and lunches every single day for April break, which was helpful.
Stephanie, good work. Very good.
So I'm waiting, I have a meeting with John on Friday to go and see how we ended the month of April. We, we are in a deficit. Um, but we did start off with a fund balance, which was pretty healthy. Uh, and that's why we do budget for the transfer, just in case situations, obviously not COVID, but um, hoping that it will bring us to a somewhere in the middle kind of range. Um, and so that's why we're recommending to at least do up to the full forty thousand that we do budget for that.
And I do want to point out, as Stephanie has said, this is a request by the Board of Education for the selectmen to move money from the Board of Education General Fund to the School Lunch Fund. And the reason they have to come to us is because by charter, we are the only body that is allowed to do fund transfers. So it's Board of Education dollars, but when it's moved from fund to fund, the charter requires that the selectmen take a vote on that. Is that right, Tom? Do you want to add anything, Tom? Okay. Tom has indicated he doesn't need to add anything. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's, that's good.
So we have a motion in front of us. Jim, do you want to read it for us?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated May five, twenty twenty-one, titled Fourth Quarter Transfers Board of Education, our BOE School Lunch Fund. Whereas the Board of Education has budgeted funds within its general fund budget to transfer to the School Lunch Fund. And whereas the Board of Education is requesting a transfer of said funds to the School Lunch Fund. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the transfer of up to but no more than forty thousand dollars to the School Lunch Fund, Fund Five, from available fiscal year twenty twenty-one, but Board of Education General Fund appropriation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou here. Discussion?
I do want to say that they're being very creative. We kind of went through a bunch of things of what we could do to try and get the sales up, and they've been putting some à la carte items on carts and parking them at the front of the door as the students come in. Um, you know, students do, can still put money on their my school, my school lunch account, um, where they could still draw down money from. Um, so they are trying to make up for some of the money that, that has been lost. And we're hoping that maybe the feds may come up with some extra funding, knowing that most districts are in the same situation that we are.
Yeah, we're, we're hearing that that's likely. So fingers crossed. Every school district is managing this challenge right now.
You're meeting the challenge well. Mike Hernandez?
After the forty thousand will be moved from the general fund over, what will be left? What's the balance left in that fund?
It's hard to say because, you know, it's an ongoing, we still have two more months of school. Um, as of, I talked to John, I asked if he can give me a rough estimate. We were in a deficit of seventy-four thousand dollars just for this year. I believe our fund balance was, and Tom could correct me, it was a hundred and thirty-four thousand. So, we have a little bit of wiggle room there, but it, it's getting close. And the forty thousand will definitely help keep that up. And we do have to stay within a three-month range of our operating funds anyways, per the state regulations. And we've always been, we've always kept our fund balance pretty, pretty good for that. Um, so I think we, we should be okay. But we want to help, obviously, as much as we can and transfer as much as we can that we budget, so.
Very good. Are you ready for the question?
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed or anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is similar in that it's a transfer of funds from the Board of Education General Fund to the Building Maintenance Fund. Jim, do you want to read that for us?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution dated May five, twenty twenty-one, Fourth Quarter Transfers, BOE Building Maintenance Fund. Whereas there is a need for various repair projects at the various school locations. And whereas the repairs slash improvement projects may include, but are not limited to chimney repair at Valley View School, HVAC repairs slash upgrades district-wide, security repairs slash upgrades district-wide, exterior painting and interior painting, wallpaper removal district-wide. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby approves the transfer of up to but no more than one hundred thousand dollars to the Board of Education Maintenance Fund Account under Fund Eleven from available fiscal year twenty twenty-one, Board of Education General Fund Appropriations.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Lou here. Steph? Do you have any comments on that?
Um, no, just, it's a much-needed fund that we, you know, that we use to do all of our building maintenance. I know the chimney has been on there the last few years. Um, we are working to hopefully try and get that done next year. We've met with the building department um, and are looking into now possibly architects and design consultants to get that project going. Um, and I know we haven't been able to fund it fully in the last few years because of everything, and we're hoping now that with, we could hopefully do up to the one hundred thousand and get some projects done that are within the limits of, I know what we're doing with the Facility Steering Committee, um, within the, the buildings that, you know, that would need them right now.
Great. Charles, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just, just add that, you know, what, what we're doing now with this hundred thousand are, are things that are going to keep us together while the Facilities Committee continues to do its work. Um, you know, certainly anything that we were going to be proposing with the Facilities Committee would be on a three-to-five-to-ten-year timeframe. We, we really need these funds now. We have some, some impending costs and, and, and needs for the facilities. And certainly I would just, you know, take, take this moment to give, he's not on, I wish he heard me say this, but I just have to give a quick shout out to Carl and Stephanie. They do a remarkable job, and Tom too, keeping tab of all of these things, finding our lowest bids and really prioritizing what are many needs in our facility. So thank you, Stephanie and Tom and Carl for doing that.
Thank you, Charles. It's a very good team.
If, if these are projects that are getting done down the road, don't most bids expire within ninety days? So like, how would you know if the, the quotes that you've received won't change? Like, for instance, if you're doing a chimney in six months from now, is that quote still good for six months? Usually most bids are ninety days. Like, I, I asked.
Comment on that, Mike? Tom?
How you doing?
Sound man. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so in this, you know, so we have the Building Maintenance Fund, which we generally put in forty thousand for the town and for the board. And then we try to manage that. And when the board has funds available at the end of the year, this is where we try to put that in, as we know, there's so, so many needs that continue. And as we write that resolution, it's, it's, these are things that we'd like to accomplish. Uh, these are things that, um, you know, would be things that we could use the money for, but not limited to those items. Uh, as we moved some monies in the past and other projects came that were just dire, dire needed to have to be done before that. And so that's how some of the funds get utilized. Um, often they're HVAC-related or, or safety-related, something of that nature, where we, we have to do that to alleviate that. So your question about the bids, we don't know the specific numbers of these. We, we estimate, we get, we try to get quotes to understand if it's even feasible to do within the Building Maintenance Fund, or it's something much greater. And then we start the process, like as, as Stephanie stated, that, you know, Carl and Stephanie and myself will will meet with the building department, and the building department will give their recommendations. And then, you know, we'll go from that and take guidance to go, to go from there and and maybe, you know, reach out to another consultant, or if we have to get quotes on an architect, we'll get the quotes and then move it forward. But it's, 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 the, the transfer is to get the funds there available so that, you know, you know, as we go through the years, uh, as well as we know, and the capital plan are, are quite extensive. And then just the actual, uh, the, the projects there. That is what that money is for, to get transferred in, for utilization to carry over into other years, as that Building Maintenance Fund carries over its authorization, where the general fund ends its authorization. These other, these other funds carry it over and have a, a fund balance to be able to use in future periods. And that's kind of the, 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 what we're trying to do here is get the money in a place that we can continually transfer over to save and remedy these matters as they come about.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That makes sense. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
Um, I have a question, maybe, maybe for Tom or maybe for Stephanie. So I see HVAC repairs. Um, does that uh, qualify under the COVID relief monies from the, you know, the federal program or the money that's trickling down?
Not.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
As, not necessarily. It depends. So like this year, we had to replace the chiller at the high school. That has nothing to do with COVID. That was just a large item in the high school that had to get with, that we could not pay for out of the general funds. So it's those types of items. Um, so it technically, something like that could not be used for COVID. And those are the times, those are the types of projects that we try to fund out of there. There, um, there was another item done at the high school, something in the boiler room. So again, wasn't COVID-related. Um.
And that's what you're, you're trying to do?
Right.
Stuff with this transfer that's not really COVID-related or doesn't fall under the COVID umbrella.
There's rooftop units that are ready to go. You know, there's, there's other things, there's things that if, God forbid, an emergency happened, we have this funding available to use.
Okay.
Any other questions? Good, good discussion. Tom, did you want to add anything?
No, it was a good answer.
Good, good, good. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Stephanie, Charles, and Tom.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Uh, Rick Shaw, appointments to boards and commissions? I think you have an appointment tonight.
Uh, yes. I'd like to nominate Donna Cody to one of the open seats on the Ethics Commission.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jim Truss. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Jim, refunds of excess payments?
All right, I make a motion that we refund the amounts of three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-six cents and three hundred and ten dollars and four cents to Richard, Jay, Valerie, and Marinelli.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion that we refund the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents to Ally Financial Vault Trust.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of twenty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents to Samantha and Jacob Williams.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ralph. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Status reports.
I have a couple of quick ones.
Ralph, go ahead.
Um, most of the things, boards or commissions I'm part of are upcoming, so I don't have much there. But just want two things. One is to note that, um, I'm sorry I was late catching it, but there was a wrong number in the minutes on the last meeting. Just to reiterate and say it now is that it was the hundred and twenty-fifth uh, anniversary of the library that was canceled last year, and we're celebrating the hundred and twenty-sixth this year. In the minutes, it said a hundred and twentieth. So I just wanted to clarify that. So.
Thank you.
And the second thing, I, there's only, there's not, one thing just to note is that they did move the, uh, oh, two things. We did put some additional brownstones in the new park in the corner so that they are spots where people can could rest if they need to when they're walking the trail around it.
Very.
Yeah.
Just to reiterate, uh, we certainly have talked about benches in those types of places, but until the project is officially closed, we can't pump any other money that's not part of the bond into it. So, uh, so we're kind of still sitting still on that, but we got the stones there. And I know there's at least a couple of people that are very happy that we got the stones there. And the other thing about the park is that they did move the base for the light, uh, that's near Route seventeen. They did move the base. And I guess now they're going to wait for Eversource to come and finish putting it back up. So, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I got some items from the Board of Ed meeting last night. Few things. First of all, worth noting, we had two students that were recognized um, at the meeting. Hannah Brunk and Mia Kuznal, uh, they were recognized and both received Student Leadership Awards from the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, which is CAE, so congratulations to both of them. Um, they read a little bit about their biographies and what they've done, and two very deserving students. Dr. Britton, in his report, he noted that we've got a hundred and fifty-four students still in the PVLA. That's down from a high of two hundred and twenty. So obviously, more and more students are feeling comfortable going back to the classroom, which is positive trend. It looks likely that PVLA will end at the end of this school year. Uh, but they did note that they're, um, they're still going to need to accommodate uh, students that either are medically fragile, that have their own health risks. They're also looking at how they can help students and manage with students that, um, have family members, siblings, or parents, people in the household that are also medically fragile. So there's still caring for that, but it does look on, on mass, all the students should be back in the classroom next, at the beginning of next year. Uh, Portland is now in orange, down from red the last time we reported. It's twelve, uh, twelve cases per one hundred thousand in Portland. That looks to be, uh, that's below the Chatham Health District average, which was sixteen point three per one hundred thousand. And below the state of Connecticut average, which is twenty-two, um, twenty-two per one hundred thousand. And I think our, our vaccination rate is still the highest in the district, it's fifty-six point seven. So, positive news there. Uh, there was an award of a fourteen thousand, six hundred dollar grant, um, basically to promote financial literacy in middle school. This allows some software and programming that can go on the one-to-one devices, um, to improve. Um, those, that skill set. And there's, they're applying, the school's applying for a seventy-two thousand dollar grant. This is for Valley View to replace the playscape. Um, it would basically put an additional playscape in that now where it's focused on with the younger, younger population, it would provide some additional, um, some additional features that would be more age-appropriate, and it would also reallocate, basically restructure the way that fencing's in place to make it safer and provide a better barrier for all the students that are out there playing. Uh, we already talked about the steering committee. Um, they did talk about the summer enrichment programs. There, there was a good suite of summer enrichment programs to help the students um, basically, um, have some opportunities, uh, basically, you know, to recover from some of the impacts and some of the gaps they've seen due to COVID. And also, and it should be noted, uh, with a lot of the positive things that are going on, that it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So we thank our teachers, um, for all the work that they're doing, especially in the difficult times, uh, making sure that they educate our children. And one final follow-up that I wanted to provide, and at the last Board of, at last Board of Selectmen meeting, I think Lou had asked um, whether or not there was any work around the state of Connecticut. There's been some reports of districts that are actively trying to bring vaccination clinics in for the high school students. That hasn't happened in Portland yet, but that is something where, where Opie is working, or Dave Opazinski, the nurse, the head nurse, has been working with Chatham Health District. Those discussions are happening. Um, and it's been happening now in some of the districts where there's been higher needs. But hopefully we'll see something that will get put together. It's something that they are interested in and working on. Right now, the vaccine would be, because of what's approved, only for 16 and up. Although Pfizer, right now, I think is actively asking for approval for it, 12 to 15 population as well. That's all I have. What about?
Any questions? Anyone else? Nick, do we have any public comments?
Yeah, Don Guin mentioned when you guys were talking about the groups. He said, will civic groups like our local ham club be able to resume their evening meetings?
Yeah, that is something that I think will need to be talked with Mary Ponce about. Indications are done not at this point. Special groups and evening meetings will not be, at least for the month of May, accommodated. But I would suggest a phone call to Mary in that regard. Any other questions?
Other than that, there's nothing, no.
Thank you for the question, Don. I think that is to be announced, I would say, because in our discussions, as Mary said, it's a soft opening, but we anticipate those other groups with reservation will proceed, but not at this time. The next, the next item is informal discussion by the selectmen.
Yeah, I had one thing I was, I would like to bring up, is that the Connecticut Greenway designation application has been sent into the State Department of Environmental and Energy Protection. We have received a letter of support from the Connecticut River Cog, Sam Gold, a very nice letter to support our effort. And we received a letter from Lori Gianotti, who is the coordinator of this application at DEEP, and said that our application, our application, not saying we're going to get the Greenway, but our application was the best that she received. So we will have more information probably in September to see if we're recognized as a Connecticut Greenway for the airline trail.
Yeah, I want to compliment you, Lou, for taking the initiative. And also for our state representative, Christie Carpinio, who brought our attention to this designation. So I thank you, State Representative Christie. And I will quote what she said to you, Lou, and to the others. I, this is from Lori Gianotti, "I just wanted to say that yours was possibly the most complete and well-done application I've seen. Well done, and thank you." I'm sending it to the Connecticut Greenways Council and their endorsement. We should hear from them after May 11th. So, good job, Lou.
Thank you.
Anything else under informal discussion?
I'll, I'll comment on a couple of things, Susan.
Sure, go ahead, Rick.
That's great news, Lou. So, well done there. In similar, but not as far along, on April 22nd, I walked with a couple of people from the Connecticut River Conservancy, and we walked from the, from Tryon Street in Glastonbury down through the rookery and the meadows, and basically came out at the fairgrounds. And they, they, they wanted to see what that end of town was like. And then after we completed, then we turned around and walked back. And then one of the CRC people wanted to see some of our other riverfront properties. So I took him to our Brownstone Park, and we walked that section of riverfront. And they were pretty impressed with a couple of places in that park for potential river access, particularly at the north end of the site. And where there's a kind of a natural little eddy in the river, and there's a section of calm water. And then I took them down and showed them the area by Tilcon. And so there continues to be, just, I'm just sort of giving you some update interest from that organization for us to keep, keep moving forward on that project. And just as a little side note, I got involved with them. They asked me to, if I would volunteer my truck to go pick up some rebar, that they're doing some project down at Portland Boat Works to mitigate hydralia, which I think that's some sort of invasive.
Yeah.
It's growing in the river. So next Monday, I'm going to go to Lowe's, I guess, and pick up materials along with one of their representatives and bring it over to Portland Boat Works and see what they're up to. So there's, our, our stretch of riverfront has been getting quite a bit of attention from that organization, which I think is, in the long run, a good thing. So.
Yeah, it is. And thank you for your leadership in that area, Rick. I know you're, you're doing a great job, and we look forward to some conclusion in some of those areas. We'll keep working. I have not heard back yet from Tilcon, and I've not heard back on another item, which would be the airline trail from the folks that own the properties along the way. But we'll keep in touch with them in both those projects.
Susan, there was one other thing on that, and you mentioned Tilcon, which jogged my memory. The fellow I was with, who's, I think he's on their exec, he might be, I think he's on their executive council. He said that if we proceed with the Tilcon property, that he felt we should, the better access, less disruption of the land, more direct route to the river is between Tilcon and Merritt and Boat Works. And I told him that I didn't think Tilcon was going to go along with that. And he said, well, he said, you should go down to North Haven. And he said, there's a place on the Quinnipiac River where the path, the, the access to the river goes right next to a Tilcon plant. And I haven't had a chance to check it out. But his inference was that you could potentially, we could potentially persuade them to maybe give us a little bit better access. And I don't know if we, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't, I don't think we're to that point yet. But they, they have, and maybe when we get to that point, we, we ask them for a little more input, because it seems like they've done some of these projects around. And they know how to get what they, you know, are looking for or feel they need without totally disrupting the business that they're asking the favor from.
Maybe I could get in touch with the Land use administrator at Tilcon and see if he could do a site visit with us, and.
That might be helpful.
If there was someone from CRC that could be with us, that might be a good way. We've only done conversation electronically and by telephone. And, and I think it's time to, now that the weather is better, that we have a site visit. So I'll do my best to get, get in touch with them.
Okay.
Quite a good one. Very good. Lots of good work being done. Anyone else? I have nothing on the follow-up tonight, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lou. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, and it is 9:10. Thank you so much. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.